Folks, I have seven o'clock. Y'all will stand face the flag with me and let's repeat or say together the pledge of allegiance. We'd all just stand in place and bow our heads for a moment of silence before we begin the meeting. I'm in. Commissioners, you have before you the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? I have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet. Do I have a second? Second from Mayor Pro Tim Widmer. All those in favor of the motion to adopt the agenda signify the saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Ayes carry. The agenda is adopted. Commissioner Alexander is not here tonight. She had a hip replaced this afternoon and Hugh has called me and told me that everything is very good. She's recovering nicely and wanted us to all know that. Oh, the steward's a bit of an apology last month at the end of the meeting. I said that they were going to depose all of the members of the Board of Adjustment. Well, that is not correct. Only if there's something found in discovery will they depose a member of the Board of Adjustment, and I want to make that correction. I want to thank Matt Ashley and Kent Otto for setting up the gate race this year. They did a great job as usual. And I want to thank Chief Aaron and all of his folks for being there and directing traffic and getting us safely around the lake. And Barry Kreisman and his crew for all the, they started out with Chief Aaron and I in the morning starting that race and stayed all day getting signs put up and directing traffic and doing all that they do. And I want to thank them and staff for all y'all did and setting up the week. So with that, I will turn it over to the town administrator who will cover the consent agenda.
Visitors to Montreat. Staff would ask that the Board of Commissioners consider the adoption of the minutes posted as written.
Okay, as we adopted the agenda, we accepted the minutes as written and presented. Okay, any other items from you tonight, Ben?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, you've received administrative reports from the Administrative Department, Finance, Planning and Zoning, Police, Public Works and Water, Sanitation and Streets. Any questions of those reports and/or comments? You have one, Tom? Tom's looking for one. Thank you, Tom, and thank you staff for all your hard work and cutting the spending and doing all the saving that you've done this year. Any other comments or questions on any of the reports?
Yes, I speak to Chief Aaron. Want to ask him a question or two for a couple, I've had a couple of neighbors within Montreat, Chief Aaron, that have wanted to maybe just have you speak to these questions. One is, are the police logs public record? And then secondly, whether they are or aren't, can you speak to, and they're just curious about the types of calls that your group of officers are generally going to this time of year?
Sure.
First question, are police logs public records?
The short answer is yes, for the most part. Longer answer is there is going to be some of the more sensitive material, victims' names, addresses, phone numbers, that sort of thing will be redacted if that was ever asked to be submitted. I assume that you're talking about our dispatch calls through Buckland County EOC. So it's not a simple matter of picking up the phone or sending an email saying, hey, I would like this state's activity. I'm sure there will be some sort of release form that has to be submitted and given consideration. But again, unless it's sensitive information, like victims or group incident or something like that, generally all that should be public. Anything that's more or less discoverable evidence for court procedures is a good measure.
That is part one. Can you, can you speak to just kind of what generally some of the calls are looking like? That was the way it was phrased to me.
Well, if you look at the monthly report that is submitted, you'll see there's a list of things, two dozen or so, give or take. A lot of times, thankfully, you're going to see zeros in those columns for larceny, B and E vandalism, that sort of thing. Generally, the more zeros we see, the happier we all tend to be as a whole, although police do like the action from time to time. So yeah, generally what you're going to see is, especially if you're looking at what is submitted to the Town Council every month, with dispatch calls, the officer-initiated calls, dispatch calls being stuff that's coming over the radio, officer, so it's a radio number, go to this address for this incident. Or if it's something simple where a phone call comes into the department and that officer has to take care of that, or that's going to fall in that umbrella of dispatch stuff. Fire calls, EMS calls, alarms, fire or burglar. Ordinance violations, we have various those with dogs, skateboards, that sort of thing, parking issues. Again, the stuff that thankfully we see low numbers on with break and entering. Accident reports, thankfully, those tend to stay pretty low. Truck turns at the gate, that's something we can keep track of. What you generally see in these monthly reports, this list has just sort of been culminated over the years. There's nothing in a certification manual somewhere that says this must be stated and reported upon. It's just sort of a, we've always done things. While this list has grown a little bit to incorporate things like truck turns at the gates, auxiliary hours, that sort of thing. That's what we keep internally in the House. That's generally for the benefit of the council and for members of the community and to see what our activity level is like. You'll see a smaller list and stuff that's being tracked by EOC, by Buckland County 911 Center, but more or less going to be fall into the same area. Traffic stops, parking, alarms, suspicious persons, suspicious vehicles, that sort of thing. So that's generally what we tend to see. We have it sort of twofold with what we keep in house records of our dated logs. It's the stuff we have dropped down menu so they can select whether it's an alarm for burglar, fire, suspicious person, whatever. That's also going to act as pass along information from officer to officer. So if somebody has something on a Thursday, it's like, wait a second, that sounds like something Jim had on Tuesday. Let me go back and take a look at that.
Good. Well, thank you. Again, I was asking that on behalf of a few neighbors. But again, you know, the whites this weekend or with the fourth and the amount of people we had coming in, I see quite a bit of police presence, you know, on my street almost daily. So anyway, thank you. And I believe that answered the question.
When the dreaded noise in Montreat is the ambulance that comes in, do you all respond to those calls also?
Yes and no. Years ago, when I started, we would generally get contacted when the fire department or EMS were coming up here simply because it's kind of maze-like and we tended to know our way around a little bit better. If we had a problem on a road, maybe take a more secure this route and we would do that. As GPS has become more prevalent and everybody's walking around with it on their phone, all the emergency vehicles have that stuff on there. They didn't rely on us as much to help them find their way. But sometimes they will let us know if they're having difficulty finding an address. It's going to depend on the situation. If it's something where you have an unresponsive person and CPR is going to come into play, you want as many people there as possible because when you're doing those chest compressions, most people are going to get gassed pretty quick and the more people you can sort of rotate through that. But there again, if you've got ambulance system.
Thanks, Dave. Floor is now open for public comment.
Hi, Kate Heiner at 319 Assembly Drive. And just a quick comment, I want to thank our mayor, Tim Helms, for recently meeting with Powell Jones, Harry T. Jones and myself. It was very positive meeting. And the mayor confirmed in his earlier statements to Harry T. Jones that we need to follow the process and that that we are continuing to follow the process and he appreciated that. And so I just wanted to again thank him for that meeting him up quite a bit to us. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir. I'm Harry T. Jones, 300 North Carolina Terrance. And this is just thank you for your comments earlier. And this is a statement just to clarify the misunderstanding. And in the Town Council meeting of June 9th, the mayor of Montreat made a statement that regrettably incorrectly characterized the recent request to the town that was made by our attorneys on our behalf. This statement was repeated in the June 10th edition of the Montreat meeting. Several of us met with the mayor June 27th to clarify this misunderstanding. It was a good meeting. And we came, all came out equally committed to a fair process and open communication going forward. This clarification is important. Our appeal to the Superior Court and our request for further information in advance of the appeal hearing are basic steps to ensure that the town's decisions are consistent with the law and are made by impartial decision makers. If information arises that requires further inquiry, such as through deposition, then that will be considered. However, we confirm to the mayor that our attorneys have certainly never had the intention to depose all the members of the Board of Adjustment. A deposition would be inappropriate and unhelpful unless there are specific questions to be addressed. We greatly respect the community members who serve on our town's volunteer boards and are thankful for each who are working to make Montreat a better place. Nothing about the current appeal process and the normal steps towards ensuring accurate information could be seen to question the integrity of Board of Adjustment members. We believe that the mayor now understands our primary intent to ensure a fair process. Mayor Tim Helms has worked hard for the community. We appreciate his statement of maintaining neutrality in this process. Thanks to all of you, sir.
Next. Public comment on anything?
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Oliver and I live with my wife at 161 Mississippi here in Montreat. My home is next door to the applicant's empty lot for which the owners are asking on this board to grant a conditional use to build residence that would violate the current zoning as it would be related to the side yard setback. I have previously expressed my opposition to this application in writing and orally at the previous hearing, which I stand by. I understand that you have received a recommendation to approve the applicant's request. I would request that one additional condition be added before you act on the recommendation. Although the applicant have discussed this with me, that they have, should have no concern regarding any electrical issues that may affect my home. I believe it is necessary that if this board is considering accepting this application, that the matter needs to be addressed as a condition for granting the application. I request that there be a condition that in the event that that applicant, excuse me, applicant proposed build causes any damage or needs to repair or replace the electrical service to my home or through my driveway, that in that event, the applicant must pay for that damage and repair. Also, I believe there should be some wording in order that in the event of any of these conditions set forth in this conditional use permit are not complied with, an immediate stop or order would be issued by the building department. Without these clauses, there would be no way to enforce compliance by applicants, and I thank you. I don't know if you know my property, but my house was built in 54 and that electrical runs across this property, the Madder property. And they have stated they didn't know what they were doing with the electrical. And then the contractor that turned out yesterday and said, well, we can dig it down right through the driveway and then you'll have to fix it. And so it threw a red flag for me again that I'm not responsible for that. They need to pay for that. And I just wanted to put it under the special use.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anyone else? Floor is open. Okay, we'll close that then. Move on to the next item on the agenda. We have no old business tonight. Everything is new. Public hearing, conditional zoning request lot 1185 Mississippi Road. And I get a motion so we can either discuss it or motion so we can just go on.
Move to open public hearing.
Have a motion from Commissioner Blake to open public hearing. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Have a second from Commissioner Otto. All those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Floor is open for a public hearing on, who's going to, Ben, you going to say anything to that? You going to speak to it at all?
Yes, sir. If I may just give a brief synopsis. This is a request for conditional zoning on property located at 159 Mississippi Road Extension by Mr. Mrs. Mater. I don't know if I'm pronouncing that. What they're asking for is an encroachment of five feet into the 15th side yard setback. No recommendation from staff since this is a public hearing, you don't need to consider the information shared today or this evening. But the planning board did make a recommendation, if the council so decides to approve it, there are some conditions they would like to make or put forward to the commissioners for consideration.
Okay. Mr. Oliver, this is what you just spoke to? Okay, a little premature, but you fine. We'll put it right with the public hearing information, Angie, won't we? Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Nora, would you, speaking of Mike, please? See if we can get it high enough. Is that a little bit better? Thank you. I represent Mike and his wife. Unfortunately, they cannot be here tonight. They wanted to be. The reason is that Mike has been recently diagnosed with ALS and the progress on that has been difficult. And he just literally couldn't make it here. They were here with us at the planning board meeting. They are looking forward to hopefully an approval this evening that'll let them build what is supposed to be their retirement home. And, but they asked me to come here tonight to talk to you all about the proposal as was briefly outlined. It's a minor request of a five-foot reduction. We've agreed to the conditions that the planning board included in their recommendation to you all as conditions that we would accept. We're looking forward to being good neighbors with Mr. Oliver and the others. And I think this is also a good example of what conditional zoning is supposed to look like. This is your first project. This is the first one that's come before you. This isn't substituting something that isn't consistent with the neighboring properties for something that should be there. It's a single-family residential home that's very similar in character to the neighboring properties. The Maders could have put in a home that would have been three stories. That's what's allowed by right under your Zen Board. But rather than doing something that they felt was sort of out of character with the neighboring properties, they went through what has been the extra effort of retaining, we have our expert, our architect, Maury with us, here this, Maury Hurt, here with us this evening. If there are any questions from the board members about the project, but put themselves through the extra process of going for the planning board and for you all to make this dream come true for them. I'm happy to answer any questions about the application that you might have. But again, the recommendation was unanimous from the planning board to approve with the conditions that we've agreed to. I'll just leave it there.
Any questions, Kitty?
Yeah, could you speak to Mr. Oliver's request? Do I understand that, that his driveway could be dug up for the electrical line and not repaired?
So I, I can't speak to, here's what I can't speak to. Duke Power is responsible for providing power to each of the homes. So that's not us. It's not our contractor that's out there that's digging up his electrical. But there will have to be a rerouting of that electrical where it currently, his, his power line currently cuts across the Mater's property. That will be relocated as part of this process. But that's on Duke Power. And again, it's not something that I can commit to you all to take responsibility for because it's not something within my client's power to do. It's the electric company that will do that. I also can't speak to what contractor was out on this property. I haven't had a chance to. I, I don't know about it. So again, I know Duke Power provides power to all of us and I'm sure that they'll make sure that that's done correctly for the Mater, or excuse me, for the Olivers and the Maders part of this process.
Who has the burden of the cost for providing that electricity? The, is Duke Power going to do it for free to relocate it? Or is somebody going to have to pay Duke Power to do it? And if so, who?
Well, I, I don't want to give, I can't answer that question with, I think, the level of certainty that you would want me to provide. This is not, but my understanding, having represented power companies as far as this is not something that they're going to turn to Mr. Oliver and they're going to say, okay, now you need to pay for us to hook up electricity to your house. They're rerouting their line. So my experience has been that the power company pays for that. Now, I can't represent to you that that would, I just don't want to make a statement that I'm not 100% sure about, but that is my experience. I understand his concern, but it's not my experience that that's going to be something.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I would add that in your agenda packet on page 103 and 104 are the conditions that the planning board laid out for your consideration.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about those conditions as well. Those were ones that I think were negotiated over both two different hearing dates and were agreed to.
Yeah.
In addition to Mr. Oliver's concerns.
Okay, you want to cover those conditions so all the commissioners?
I have that packet. Which page did you say that was?
103, 104.
So sort of working through, and this is on 103 at the top here, that limit construction to a one single-family home substantially in accordance with what had been presented in the drawings. So what you see as part of the packet is what you're going to get on the property. This is not something that can, can change in any substantial way or would require us to come back to the planning board and you all for secondary approval.
You might just interrupt.
Yes.
I think that's one thing that everybody needs to, I'll talk a little bit more about conditional zoning later. But that's one of the unique things that are different. Conditional zoning, which is what we have here, the variance, you get a variance. There's really nothing fine in what people do. I've seen a number of cases where somebody, so I just need this to put my house to get a variance, a variance advantage. And something totally different is represented in action. That's not what the condition is on. Sure that it is compatible with the nature of the field to people, they're bound by just exactly what they say.
Correct. And your zoning administrator will be monitoring that along the way to ensure that. Number two here is applicants have to, we've committed, we did this even before the hearing, but we committed to getting the guidance of a licensed arborist. We already have retained to help take care of a large white oak tree that's on the property to use best practices to avoid essentially compacting the ground and the roots around that, that system to preserve the tree. That's one of the things we've committed to doing. On number three there, we've committed to providing regular communication to both Mr. Oliver and Miss Barrier, the neighboring property owners, about what we're doing and when so that they can be made aware. And if they had concerns, be out on their properties. Again, we don't think there'll be any need for concern, but that communication is going to be ongoing throughout the process. We have committed to ensuring that all excavation and other activities for construction of the retaining wall will not intrude onto their properties. That would be our commitment anyways, but it's explicitly, explicitly part of this proposal. We also, number five there, have agreed to put in landscaping buffers along that so that we can soften the sides of the house compared to the neighboring properties. We've also committed to number six there, getting all necessary approvals from Metropolitan. Sewer District. One of the keys to this project, the reason, if you're wondering why do you need five, why do you need five feet over here? You can just do five feet over there. Reason why there is not an option is there is a MSD sewer line easement on this side of 15 feet that they will not allow us to encroach within because again, the piping that goes through that area is something that they have to maintain. So this was really our only option to go in that direction versus the other side. And those were, I believe, all of the conditions on 103 there. I'll kind of go into consistency recommendations on 104. Are there any questions?
Any question, Tom?
Mr. Norah, if I read the diagrams correctly, the, the five foot request for variance making it 10 feet instead of 15 is on the opposite side of Mr. Oliver's property?
That's correct. It's on the Farrier side of the property, yes.
And would the 15 feet on Mr. Oliver's side still be maintained?
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
That's that MSD easement.
Any other? Any other commissioners' questions? We thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mary?
Mary Standard. And it's interesting watching this process take place for the first time and we'll see how it all works out and how, how. I live at 118 Shenandoah Terrace, Montreter, Black Mountain, depending upon whom you're talking to. Okay. So you take that as you will. Hopefully the council can take care of that at one point in time. But as we go through this new process, um, just, and I think y'all know me well enough by now, I'm a process person. So there have been a number of conditions set. So I want to ask the council, and you've alluded to it, how those conditions are going to be monitored, not just short term, but long term. And is that to be written into the position of the code enforcement? Is that the building inspector? We've heard Mr. Norah talk about there being a landscape person coming out to determine what would be put in that area. Are those going to be one foot trees, ten foot trees? So who gets to determine? Do the Barriers and the Olivers get some say? Who makes those determinations is something I want y'all to consider as you make your decision. And the follow-up, as I said, not just the short term, but the long term and be very specific that that's somebody's job. So that the Olivers and the Farriers will know who to go to, who's responsible to report back to you that this is actually happening. So thank you. And I think that's a real important process of closing that loop as you have these conditions set. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Sure. Step up to that microphone. There you go.
I'm sorry. On the fly, I talked to Scott and he said it might, it'd probably fall under him, maybe, maybe Dan, you know, or somebody. But I hope we can figure out who, who does take care of the ordinance. And just to back the electrical, they did ask me, and so I did ask the question in several meetings that the matters had and the attorney here about the electrical. And there was, oh, yes, maybe, I don't know. You know, the question, it was just all over the place. And I'm concerned. They said I had to call Duke. So I called Duke and they told me, yes, they will put it in. Somebody is responsible for the, on my house, the, the wire that goes up and all the channel that goes under. So that's why I'm bringing it forth at this time. I wish they would have got answered before this, but it didn't. So I'm asking if it would be in the conditional zoning for that, if we can add that to that. Because I think it's, it shouldn't be expensed to me at all. But they do do it free. Duke Underground, whoever, that's the pay for that, the rest of it, putting the asphalt down, things like that. So.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Any other comments on public hearing? Sure.
Just to answer one of the questions that had been raised about who monitors, the answer is your zoning administrator. And just so it's clear, what happens if you don't do one of these things? The answer is, we don't get a certificate of occupancy. We can't move into the house. We can't do anything like that if all of the conditions have not been met. I know Scott will be monitoring throughout the process, but that is also that fact check to make sure that at the end of the day, everything is done correctly. So I just wanted to clarify that. One thing I did leave out in case there are any questions about the retaining walls, one of our conditions is also to put fencing and barriers along that. So there couldn't be someone who comes along, even though they would be trespassing, but they come onto the property and could fall over a retaining wall. We're putting a protective fence along that way as well. So as a safety measure.
And there are rules about how high and what a fence has to look like in Montrete, too.
Correct. And we will meet all of those conditions as part of that as well.
All right.
Oh, Mayor, Commissioners, I would add that this would be considered a zoning violation for the long term. This is not just the short term. This would also apply if, if these conditions were to fail after the certificate of occupancy has been given, it would, could fall under the zoning violation codes.
That's correct. And these conditions essentially run with the land. In most cases, they're recorded in a deed on the back end so that again, someone could look at that, see the conditional zone and see the requirements and know that it, let's say, 10 or 15 years ago.
The, the conditional zoning is a, is an overlay. It's an overlay over the existing zoning. So it's an, it's an R dash whatever conditional zoning distance. And that conditional zoning is an overlay in everything in, if it's all those conditions, all the drawings, et cetera, that are submitted are actually part of the zoning ordinance. And so
That's right.
any of those things, if they fail to do it, any of those things is a violation and, and stop, whether stop work orders or whatever can be taken. So enforcement's really not an issue.
I just didn't want y'all not to have the answer to that question, at least as best as I know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? You were wanting to stand up? Did you want to speak? Okay, it's covered. Okay. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing then. Have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Whitmer to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Blake. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Hearing is closed. Now, we have a conditional, consideration of a conditional zoning request. Suggested motion, this is, what property is this? This Mississippi Road? This is what we were just discussing.
Mississippi Road.
Okay. Yeah. They have a motion to approve or deny the conditional zoning request.
Move approval.
Move approval from Commissioner Blake. Do I have a second?
Sub, 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 in accordance with the conditional zoning ordinance.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm ending it. No, I'm not suggesting that Mr. Oliver's suggested conditions be included.
Have a motion from Commissioner Blake. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Otto. Discussion?
I'd just like to open up by saying I have the privilege of, of being one of the drafters of the conditional zoning ordinance. Planning and zoning board a couple of years ago, several years ago, passed with revising our zoning code. One of the, one of the difficulties that we faced in trying to make a code that works is that unlike most subdivisions and most communities where zoning, uniform zoning codes are promulgated, the lots in the subdivisions are generally regular. Subdivisions are created by planners and normally the lots will have certain minimum widths and certain minimum depths. And as 90% of them are fairly, fairly identical. A few feet here, a few feet there, different. Nothing is more magical and nothing is more irregular than the lots in Montrete. And our goal was to, how to create fairness out of this because the only alternative that residents of Montrete had with difficult lots was try to get a variance. There are several problems with the variance. Mainly is the legal, the, the legal requirement that someone has to meet to get a variance. And, and it's, and essentially, the, the hardest one to meet is, is you, you almost got to prove, you've got to prove necessity that you can't build anything on a lot but for getting this variance, which is a very difficult burden to prove. And it's difficult to prove not just in Montrete, but anywhere. A lot of times boards of zoning adjustment in various jurisdictions where I practiced law many years, just sort of winked about that requirement. In other jurisdictions I practice in, they just didn't give out variances because nobody could ever meet them. And most jurisdictions, the board of adjustment would be this way one, for a few years and that, they'd be tired of being so mean and then they'd be nice for a few years. Well, the other problem about variances is, I mentioned earlier, you, you don't know what you get when you, once you give a variance, you give, yeah, okay, we'll give you an additional five feet of setback. But, but what you get is not necessarily what's right for the neighborhood. The conditional zoning tries to solve that problem. It's really a, a, a community process. And as I thought about it, trying to solve it in a way, Byrne sitting right here brought up the problem of setbacks with lots of different homes. And a lot of people were wanting to just eliminate setbacks or reduce setbacks substantially. I didn't want to reduce setbacks to make it easier. What we did was, the conditional zoning was a compromise between reducing setback requirements, which we didn't do it with a couple of minor cases. And, and in, in, in that compromise is to allow someone to come in, involve the community. And the, the conditional zoning process actually requires a community meeting to go hire some professionals like Maury Hurt to come up, design something that solves the problem for the homeowner. In this case, we have a unique problem, a very narrow lot. And then we've got a sewer easement which I guarantee you the sewer company will not let you build it. And they could not even fit in a, I believe it's Murray, less than 1,200 square feet of living area. So this is not a large home. This is 1,200 square feet on this lot, trying to fit it in there. And they couldn't get that much living area without going three stories because of the combination of the narrow wa, lot with, and the easement. And so what the zoning does is conditional zoning brings the community in, brings professionals in. It's an expensive process for the lot owner. And it's a process the lot owner's stuck with. Once they say, here's what we're going to do, that's what they've got to do. It's actually part of the zoning ordinance. So this was our first, uh, conditional zoning request. It's not an, even though it's new to Montrete, it's not new to North Carolina. It's used in a number of North Carolina communities. It's, it's being adopted more and more and used more and more throughout the state because of the flexibility it brings. But at the same time, it allows the community, it allows problems to be addressed in a context that are consistent with community values and aesthetics and are binding on the person who gets the relief they suggest. So I, 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 because I drafted the ordinance and this was the first instance and it was enforced or, or taken advantage of, I sat in the meeting. I heard the testimony. I listened to the various members of the Planning and Zoning Commission discuss the project and I believe they made the right decision in unanimously recommending that this board approved the conditional zoning. I understand we've been asked to add two conditions. I, I just simply can't. I think it's a problem, if, if the gentleman has a problem, it's with Duke Power. And I don't know enough details from it. If, if he wasn't able to convince the Planning and Zoning Commission and put it in this commission, he hasn't provided enough information for me here tonight to decide that that's an appropriate condition. And I'm sorry, but there's just not enough information that you provided tonight for me. And so I would not postpone this hearing and these folks work on this any further, I'd suggest we simply move forward and approve it. The, the condition about a stop work order, that's not anything that's a proper condition to the zoning ordinance. Stop work orders are covered by chapter 160D and any, any stop work order is governed by the requirements. So for that reason, that's second condition. I don't think it's appropriate to add as a condition. I do think that conditions they, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended are thorough and I'm in favor of it as currently working.
I have a motion. Angie, do I have a second? Did you second it, Kent?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes carry. Okay. Item C is a consideration of amendments to the Code of General Ordinances.
Yes, sir. If you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, members of the Assembly Board, this is a request by staff to reflect the changes in the Montrete Code of General Ordinances as it pertains to Article Four Officers and Employees. You'll recall at your June the 9th, 2022 regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, the council adopted a change in its form of government from a mayor council former government to a council manager former government. These amendments reflect those changes that are necessary to show the council manager form of government. You'll look in your agenda packet beginning on page 115. It will outline the duties and responsibilities of various officers and employees. One is the, the office of the mayor. Also, it adds the duties and responsibilities of the mayor pro team. And then also the office of the town manager. And then reflects also the other department heads such as the finance director and the public works director. Again, you'll see that in your agenda packet and showing the necessary amendments to the Code of Ordinances. I would also state that there were some typos in the, in the presentation to you or your documents. Those would be corrected by staff if the council so desires. And there was a section eight, which reads, section eight, other officers and employees, such other officers and employees that are deemed necessary shall be appointed by the town board of commissioners. Since you've gone through the council manager form of government, all employees are hired by the town manager. So that portion is somewhat obsolete and we would request that that be stricken from the Code of General Ordinances.
Okay.
Nine would be renumbered section. That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Blake.
All right. Yeah. You see the suggested motion. Whoever makes the motion, I would suggest that you add with corrections to typographical errors.
Sorry about that. I moved to adopt the amendments to the Montrete Code of General Ordinance with the proposed typographical errors corrected.
Have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Whitmer. Do I have a second? Have a second from Commissioner Fuchet. Discussion or questions? Hearing none? Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Darn, I asked about my veto power this week and y'all didn't give it to me. Okay. Item D is consideration of setting a public hearing in reference to closing and removing from dedication a portion of North Carolina Terrace. This is just to set the, of, of public hearing. And the public hearing would be set on August the 11th at 7:00 PM or thereafter. Do I have a motion on this?
Move to set a public hearing.
Have a motion from Commissioner Blake to set a public hearing. Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second from Mayor Pro Tim Whitmer. Discussion? Questions? All those in favor of the motion to consider this and have a public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Floor is open for public comment.
Mary Standard, 118 Shenandoah Terrace, Montrete. And I just wanted to thank Planning and Zoning for all their hard work and also to Commissioner Blake for his explanation. and Zoning for all their hard work, and also to Commissioner Blake for his explanation. And that was very helpful to all of us. And having been around for a while on this, the ordinances are meant to be living documents, and they should be reviewed, and they should be looked at. So this is the first of that type. But also, I think some of you might know, I like to do a little bit of Montreat history. So I wanted to share one thing with you as a commission and, and the public. It wasn't all that long ago, I remember an ordinance being on the books, probably held over from ever and ever and ever. It was about 2008, 2010, that range. But there was an ordinance on the books that said, if you have any one corner of your Montreat lot was not a 90-degree angle. So think about that. How many lots in Montreat have four 90-degree angles? But at any rate, the ordinance read something like, if you met those conditions of one corner not being 90-degree angle, you could have your setbacks on two sides reduced in half, which certainly was an interesting concept at the time. So that was removed. So now we've moved on to other things, and we'll see how they work out. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Floor is open for public comment. Nobody jumping up, we'll move on. Commissioners communications. Anybody have anything tonight?
I'd just like to report that in, continuing to follow up on the bear hunting dog incidents, Commissioner Whitmer and I have been looking at a, a sort of a fourth-part, four-legged stool sort of approach to, to continuing and work on that, with one being revisions in addition to our ordinances to increase deterrence, and second being public information and involvement. Third being communications with our bear hunters, particularly the Mount Mitchell Bear Hunting Club, and fourth being increasing our police preparedness. I've been working on some ordinances and have prepared drafts of those I'm not completely happy with, but I, I, I will, I will have them finished fairly soon. I plan to review them with, individually with members of this commission. I also have asked District Attorney Todd Williams, and Attorney Todd Williams has agreed to review them, to take a look at, see if they have any suggestions in terms of making them as enforceable and as effective as possible. I'll also review them with concerned citizens and the MRA, as well as the Mount Mitchell Bear Hunting Club, all the people that have been involved in this process. And I hope to bring, after that, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm probably positive, I'll not make everybody happy, but I'll at least talk to everybody and bring those forward, and I intend to introduce those ordinances, as well as, and hopefully Tom and I'll have a report on our complete plan at our next meeting. We have bear hunting season coming up again in October, towards the end of October. We'll need a few months' time to get these ordinances, or whatever we do, done.
Commissioner Fouché?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, most of the people here were at the summer club meeting yesterday, where the Presidential Heritage Center made a great presentation. So I encourage you to come next week to hear John Casper talk about his book. It's a wonderful book. And if you haven't read it, you need to get it and read it. And I just want to thank also Tom and Mason for working so hard on the bear situation. They really put their heart and effort into it.
Anyone else?
Yes. Speaking of bears, and I wasn't going to talk about this, Commissioner Blake, but I have seen this year, and I, and I'm out quite a bit riding bikes in, in the community, especially this time, even seen the most bears I've seen in 15 years. And this weekend, I counted about 12 bags of trash in different locations that had been, in fact, I even literally stopped riding my bike as a bear crossed with a bag of, of trash, just heading up into the woods. I share that, not to talk about the bear so much, other than, I, I think we certainly need to be aware of it. But the trash situation, and again, as more and more people are coming into Montreat, are, and I think this is something I will run with, you know, going forward, as far as how we want to deal with this additional trash, the cost, and just, this is where we need to go as a community. But I, but I will say this, and I just want to say it for the record, the people, us neighbors, our guests, whatever, need to put this trash, tie the bags, and put them into bear containers. And, and, and I, you think, well, that's just common sense. You know, again, I saw some, and no pointing fingers, you know, again, we have lots of wonderful guests here, but they're not aware of it. 15 bags of trash just sitting outside the containers. And I'm thinking, there's probably a correlation why I'm seeing more bears this year, if there's more trash. So again, I say that just, just for information, to, let's, let's try to be as wise as we can with our trash.
You're exactly right. And that's part of what Tom and I are talking about, is increasing community awareness of the need to take care of our trash. And we hope the Bear Wise Program that we'd like to get involved will help do that.
Anyone else? Kitty, you going to sing, or are you going to speak?
Yeah.
You're packing, okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Next to adjourn.
Wait a minute. What? Okay, coming up, Tree Board, Tuesday, July 26th at 9:30 AM at Town Hall by Zoom Software. Board of Adjustment, Thursday, July 28th at 5:00 PM in the Town Hall. It's also available by Zoom Software. Land Care, Wednesday, August 3rd at 9:00 AM at Town Hall, Zoom's available. August, Town Council Meeting, Thursday, August 11, 7:00 PM. The public forums, it begins at 6:30, and all that is available by Zoom. Bridge Aesthetics Committee Meeting, Tuesday, August 16th at 2:00 PM in Town Hall by Zoom Meeting Software. Tree Board, Tuesday, August 23rd, 9:30 AM in Town Hall and by Zoom. Anything else, Angie? Will that do it? Or did we miss one?
I missed the community workshop for the comprehensive plan is on the 23rd. There's two times, 10 to noon, and then 6 to 8 in this room, and they're going to have all kinds of different activities, and they want everybody to come, whether you work here or live here or visit here, they want everybody's opinion.
Okay, want your opinion. The, there will be many community meetings. The members of the Comprehensive Planning Committee will be holding committee meeting, or community meetings in their, or neighborhood meetings in their homes. So you can participate that way. And then you can also come to the big meetings, and the ones Angie just announced. The, the survey is closed now. So now we move on to talking face-to-face with people, getting their opinions soon fore. Do I, can I entertain a motion now, Angie, to adjourn? Have a motion from Commissioner Fouché. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Otto. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes carry. We're stand adjourned. Thank y'all so much for coming.